Good evening, everybody. I would like to call to order the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for February the 17th, 2014. I'd also like to remind everybody in our audience, if you have a mobile device of any kind, please go ahead and put that on vibrate or silence so that in the event you receive a phone call during the meeting, it won't disturb the meeting. We would appreciate that. I also like to do a reminder at our meetings, these are televised. Tonight is our regular meeting, so it's televised live on Channel 22, so please keep that in mind. Also, we will be broadcasting on Sunday and Saturday at 1:00, Sunday and Tuesday at 6:30, and Thursday and Fridays at 6:30. Our meetings are broadcast, and it alternates between the work session and the regular meeting. So, thank you all very much for being with us tonight. We're happy to see so many people. We'd like to start our meeting with our presentation of colors. It's our pleasure to welcome Girl Scout Troop 1486 from New Life Baptist Church in Concord. Please rise for the presentation of colors.
Girl Scouts, attention. Color Guard, prepare to post your colors. Color Guard, post colors. Girl Scouts, please salute your flag. Please join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is also our pleasure to recognize Reverend David Rayford with Mount Mitchell United Methodist Church in Conneplis to offer invocation for this evening. Welcome, and thank you.
It's an honor and privilege to be here. Please bow your head as I pray. Loving and gracious God, we offer our thanks on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for the many and abundant blessings that you've provided us. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for our sustenance, and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work, and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Merciful God, we thank you for loving us for who we are, for your boundless and gracious nature. Lord, I lift up to you the many servants in Cabarrus County who served the residents, in particular, for this assembled council, and I ask the night that you graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of all the people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there's honest disagreement, and personal peace in their lives and joy in this task. I pray for this agenda set before them tonight, and please give them an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved Cabarrus County. It's in your most blessed name I pray. Amen.
Again, thank you very much Reverend Rayford. And we would like to have a seat. We want to recognize, do you have the pins? We want to recognize our Girl Scout troop that's here tonight. So, ladies, what I'd like to ask is if you will come forward, please. You can all come up at the same time, however you want to, but individually, you may need to take the microphone and pull it down a little bit. That's what I have to do. Pull it down, and tell us your name, and tell us what grade you're in and what school you go to. There you go. Thank you.
My name is Kennedy St. John. The grade I go in is second grade, and the school I go to is the Bears Color Shallow B School.
And tell me why you like Girl scouting.
Because it's really fun. You get to be around other girls.
Very good. If you will, please go over to your left, my right, and Commissioner Burridge has a pen for you. Hello.
My name is Taylor David, and I'm in third grade, and I go to Cabarrus Charter Academy. The reason I like Girl Scouts is because you get to be with different girls that you have, that you don't know sometimes, and you get to have fun activities with them.
Thank you very much. Hello.
My name is Madison, and I'm in second grade, and I like Girl Scouts. I'm in Bogart Elementary School. I like Girl Scouts because it's fun, and you get to make new friends.
Great, thank you. Hello.
My name is Jayden Harrison, and I go to Harrisburg Elementary, and I like Girl Scouts because you get to help other people and do fun activities.
Great, thank you.
My name is Alexis Flowers, and I go to Northside Christian Academy, and I'm in third grade, and I like Girl Scouts because you get to do fun activities and new things that you haven't done before.
Great, thank you.
My name is Octavia Day, and I like, and...
What grade are you in?
I'm in second grade, and I go to Odell Elementary School, and I like Girl Scouts because you get to do fun activities.
Do you want to help lift her up a little bit? Please? There we go.
What's your name?
What's your name? You want to tell us your name?
My name's Amira.
Amira. Look up here at me, Amira. Are you just trying to get your picture taken? You look really cute tonight. Do you like Girl Scouts? You don't? Not tonight? Well, we're glad that you're here, okay? Commissioner Burridge will give you a pen, so you'll remember being here. You can adjust that. Thank you.
My name is Kayla Hill. I go to Harris Road Middle School, and I'm in the eighth grade.
And what do you like about Girl scouting?
I like that you get the chance to help other people, and do stuff for your community, and be with other girls.
Thank you very much.
My name is Kayla Basquoz, and I go to Harris Road Middle School, and I'm in seventh grade. I like Girl Scouts because you get to make new friends and help other people.
Great, thank you very much.
My name is Tidasia Davis, and I go to Harris Road Middle School. I'm in eighth grade, and I like Girl Scouts because you get to build new skills and hang out with people your age and have lots of fun.
Great, thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Madge Graham, and I'm in the eighth grade, and I go to Harris Road Middle School. I like Girl Scouts because you get to do a lot of new activities that you haven't done before.
Great, thank you very much. Again, we want to thank all of the Girl Scouts, and also, we want to thank the adults that give of their time and efforts to help these young ladies. So, thank you all very much to the young ladies and the parents that helped. So, thank you all very much, and again, Reverend Rayford, we appreciate you being here. Commissioners, the first thing we have is approval of the meeting minutes that you have in your agenda. At this time, I would accept a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, we have approval of the agenda. There are some changes that you'll see on page 188, so at this time, may I accept a motion to approve the agenda, including the changes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now, we'll move on to recognitions and presentations, and I'd like to call on Alan Thompson. There is a reason why our walls are lying tonight. Thank you very much for being here.
It's an honor to be here tonight. We have two groups of employees being recognized for their service. The first group that we recognize are those for our Service Excellence Awards. Each year, Cabarrus County EMS recognizes top performing full and part-time personnel through a system of peer nomination and leadership team approval for their performance over the past year. The Star of Life Award is presented to part-time team members who demonstrate great commitment to the service and area of system involvement, work hours, and professionalism. And then, the EMS Service Award is presented to a top performing full-time team member whose efforts have served to advance the level of care, system reputation, and community awareness. The 2013 Star of Life Award recipient is Mary Richardson. She has been employed with Cabarrus County EMS since July of 2011 in the capacity of part-time paramedic, and has worked over 1,000 hours in the past year. She holds a Master in Business from Frostburg State University, and Bachelor of Science from the University of Massachusetts, and she completed her paramedic training at Rowan Cabarrus Community College. She holds multiple instructor credentials, and has been very active in community education, both with health and safety initiatives, and as well, she has served on many peer-driven committees that have focused on improving the level of care within the system. Her volunteer activities include working with Cabarrus County School Systems, where she was a key factor in the startup of the lacrosse team at Concord High School. Our 2013 EMS Service Award is presented to James Manable, who's been employed as a paramedic crew chief with Cabarrus County since August of 2008. He holds a Bachelor of Science degree from the University of North Carolina Charlotte, and completed his paramedic training at Rowan Cabarrus Community College. He holds both national and North Carolina credentials as a paramedic, as well as multiple instructor credentials. He was responsible for driving this program we'll talk about with our next group we recognize for improvement of cardiac arrest care. He currently serves as the coordinator for this peer-driven work group, and enters data in a national database reflective of our system performance. He was also instrumental in the production of a community education video that focused on public safety, community response, and how we can better improve outcomes associated with cardiac arrest, and he did that in conjunction with the county and CMC Northeast. He also coordinated an event called Hearts and Heroes, which reunited cardiac arrest survivors with rescuers and healthcare providers. And he has also represented Cabarrus County EMS at several local and regional symposiums, and was most recently selected to attend the National Emergency Cardiovascular Care Conference as a pre-hospital representative. His volunteer activities include service with Allen Fire Department, Allen Volunteer Fire Department, as well as a volunteer cross-country coach, and track coach with Central Cabarrus High School. And also of note, he coaches at, he's also an accomplished marathon competitor himself. So, I would invite James and Mary to come forward at this time. And I'm going to ask that they stay up here, because they're also going to be recognized with this next group. In 2012, April of 2012, we changed the way that we approached cardiac arrest in this county. Much of it was because of an idea that James Manable brought before us. What we implemented was a pick crew approach to the management of cardiac arrest patients, those whose hearts stopped beating and they quit breathing. Our focus was on a team-driven approach between first responders, EMS providers, healthcare professionals, and then also, an initiative to educate the community in CPR. In 2013, because of these efforts, and the efforts of the staff in Cabarrus County, both volunteer paid and in the hospital, 52% of cardiac arrest patients regained a pulse, of all cardiac arrest patients. 84% of what we call best-case scenario patients regained a pulse, and 35% of these people walked out of the hospital to return to a normal life. Also, last year, we trained 587 community members in CPR, community CPR, and just over 1,000 the year before that. So, the providers that we recognize tonight participated in successful cardiac arrest resuscitations that resulted in the discharge of a patient from the hospital. What they have received, if you'll notice on James, this bar with the stars, each one of those stars represents a life saved. So, as you look along this wall behind you here, all of these that have been recognized over the past year, those are lives that were changed, family members that were given more time with their loved ones because of the efforts of our emergency response team in Cabarrus County. It's also important to note that this system also includes the first responder organizations, and we recognize those staff at an earlier meeting with the Cabarrus County Fire Association this month. At this time, we wish to recognize, we have 40 people that have been involved in successful resuscitations this past year. Many of those are working tonight, so we have brought a sampling with us. So, at this time, we recognize James Manable, Mary Richardson, Mark Kirk, Blake Basinger, Tim Creighton, Amanda Wirtman, Brian Hamilton, Doug Biggerstaff, Ann Coffey, and Mark Presley. We just simply wanted to bring them here tonight and show you this is your emergency response team in Cabarrus County, and because of their efforts, people are walking out of the hospital. So, thank you for what you do.
On behalf of all the residents of Cabarrus County, and all the people that come to our county for events and activities, we do all appreciate your hard work. You guys handle things and see things that most of us don't see on a daily basis, and you should be commended every day for the hard work that you do for us, and we do appreciate it. So, thank you all for coming here tonight, and please share with the folks that are on call tonight or are working out tonight, that our sentiment goes out to them also, and our appreciation for their hard work. Thank you. Dana, there you are. Dana, you're here to talk about Library 411. And we have a proclamation.
You have a proclamation before you, and I'll let you take care of reading that, but I just want to point out to everybody that we have our brochures for our four-county community read. You all should have one in front of you as well. We have them in our libraries in our parks. This is our second four-county community read. We're very excited about this one. A couple of events, there's over 60 events and three contests. A couple of events I want to bring to your attention is, on March 15th, we're going to have our Quest for the Code event at the Cabarrus Arena. It's going to be a nighttime event. It's a lot of glow-in-the-dark, and mazes, and geocaching, all kinds of different things in the dark. It is for adults, although there is high teen interest in the book. And on April 5th, the author will be here at the Concord Library. We're very excited about that. That'll be at 2:00 PM on April 5th, so we're excited about that.
Well, Commissioners, we have before us a proclamation. It's on page 40 in your book. Whereas, reading is a joy for all ages, which allows young and old to come together and discussion on a variety of topics. And whereas, every community has special traits that make it unique, these traits develop over time and are woven into the fabric of its citizens' daily lives. In many ways, our community defines who we are. And whereas, every community comes together through shared history, shared knowledge, and shared experiences, as our community grows and changes, it can become more difficult to maintain and to honor the traits that are unique and special. And whereas, the Cabarrus County Public Library has partnered with the public libraries, parks, departments, community colleges, and others in Davidson, Rowan, and Stanley Counties to form one community for the 411, Four Counties, One Book, One Community Project. And whereas, 411, Four Counties, One Book, One Community is one way to bring together each diverse individual in Cabarrus, Davidson, Rowan, and Stanley Counties to share an experience together, the experience of reading the same novel. This collective experience not only encourages literacy, it also encourages dialogue and the expression of thoughts and ideas among individuals who may not otherwise find a connection. And whereas, the months of March and April 2014 have been selected for the 411, Four Communities, One Book, One Community Project. And whereas, Mr. Penumbraum's 24-Hour Bookstore by Robin Sloan is selected as this year's 411, Four Counties, One Book, One Community Project. And whereas, in celebration of the 411, Four Counties, One Book, One Community Project created many ways to come together and participate throughout March and April by participating in book discussions, entering contests, participating in the Quest for the Code at the arena, by meeting author Robin Sloan, and many other events. Now, therefore, the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners declare the months of April and March as 411, Four Counties, One Book, One Community Months in Cabarrus County, and commend its observance to all citizens. Do I have a motion to adopt the proclamation?
So moved.
I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. It should be an exciting read.
Hope to see you all there.
Okay, Commissioners, next, we have informal public comments. I have a few cards tonight. The first card I have is Price Crutchfield.
First and foremost, before we go any farther here, Sea Vans, a great organization. They don't get enough credit. I'm over there from time to time, and if you get a chance, go to Sea Vans and make a purchase. We all know it's for a good cause. You couldn't ask for a better organization. Okay, done with that. Okay. Recently, I ran into a person that lied to the police on me. His name is Hunter Huss. He has a place called the Cabarrus Creamery on Union Street. And Commissioner Osterich, we just had a, Jason, I can't pronounce you, I'm sorry. I'm trite or trash, I'm not that literate.
No, sir, it's Osterich, Mr. Crutchfield.
Okay, good. Your acknowledgement, okay. We had talked a minute ago, and you said that he was your neighbor, and that you thought was a fine fellow. I say he's a liar and a thief. And this is why. Hunter Huss made a report to the Concord Police on me, and he told Officer Rivera, with the Concord Police, write this down, make sure you get it down good, Officer Rivera, that several of his customers had complained that I was scaring their children. I've never scared or harmed a child in my life. We all know who's been doing that. The media has shown us who's doing that, and it ain't Crutchfield. Anyway, these complaints, here comes Officer Rivera, and this individual that owns the Cabarrus Creamery, this Hunter Huss, he can't produce one person to corroborate his story. But several of his customers had complained that I was scaring their children, but no customers to corroborate his story. Well, just on his word, I'm charged with a crime, and I find out that the ex-chief of police, Merle Hamilton, who let me know he went to the same college with Hunter Huss, so let me know that they're buddies. So, here we go with the buddy system. Well, I got to go to court and mitigate my criminal liability. I get in court, and of course, I plead not guilty, because I did not scare anybody's kids. Hunter Huss is a liar and a thief. He lied to me on the police, to the police. He made a false police report. He should have been arrested for making a false police report implicating me or trying to scare kids. No. No. He's a liar, and that should have never happened, and so I was rightly and justly found not guilty, this Hunter Huss, this liar. He had three months to prepare his case and bring one single person into the courtroom, a conservative courtroom, I might add. He had three months to prepare his case. He couldn't produce one single person out of all these damaged customers with all these kids that were intimidated and scared by me. Not one! He's a liar and thief.
Thank you. Next, Robert Simmons.
I came here to ask for you...
Can you do me a favor and adjust the microphone? You're not quite as short as some of the Girl Scouts were. Thank you.
I've came here to ask for the resignation of Tricia Baker, who's a civil rights officer. But before I get into that, I want to mention something, too. It's kind of interesting here. Eighteen months ago, I came to you guys, and I mentioned to you that in trying to get on a program, I had to go to a clinic called the McGill Clinic. At that clinic, I noticed that the people who worked there, they were Hispanic, young Hispanic women, were deliberately discriminating against American citizens in favor of the Spanish-speaking women from other countries who were maybe here illegally. And then, they were not only discriminating against them by letting them pass in front of them, but they were sending the American citizens home, not giving them treatment, saying, "We can't treat you today," and letting those other people get treatment. And I thought that someone on this board would, at that time, whoever was on the board at that time, would have at least picked up the telephone and made a phone call and asked, "Hey, is this going on? Can you tell me about it?" But I found out months later that nobody did. Not one single person on this board thought enough about me saying that we're being discriminated against in regards to medical treatment to even pick up the telephone and call. And to show you how bad that is, if you go to California or other places where there's a huge Hispanic population, mostly illegal immigrants, you cannot go into a free clinic, tax-funded clinic, and get medical treatment unless you're Hispanic. They won't treat you. They will tell you, "The doctor's not in. Come back next month." They won't treat you. And it all starts with people who are in a position of power to solve the problem early, ignoring it. Now, I'm talking about hundreds of clinics, not just one clinic in California, also New Mexico, Arizona, anywhere where there's a large illegal alien population. They're denying American citizens treatment in those clinics once they get enough power in there. All the women working in there who process people in, they are all the daughters of Hispanic women, and they're not letting us have medical treatment. You should really take that seriously and look into it. Now, Mrs. Baker, who was a civil rights officer, I believe, I'm fairly certain she's violated her oath of office. Eighteen months ago, when I filed my complaint with you guys and with them, telling you about the discrimination I had to go through just to be allowed to get on the program, she was supposed to, or Mr. Rose was supposed to, file a civil rights violation with the Department of Social Services. Carlotta Dixon is the person who handles that. Now, filing a civil rights violation is actually a waste of time most of the time, because they don't really do anything unless it suits their own purpose. I know, because I tried to file a complaint last year when some people denied me medical treatment because I filed a complaint. Once they found out that the people I was complaining on were all women, they hung up the phone on me, never sent me a form. As I'm leaving, I want to say this. You need to find out why she didn't file that civil rights violation. You need to find out why, when she's on the board of directors for the community for the Cabarrus, I'm sorry, I have a brain tumor, and sometimes I have trouble thinking, but she's on the community care program of Southern Piedmont, and she should have got involved in trying to solve that problem once the civil rights people refused to help me. She did not. Why? She's a civil rights officer. Doesn't she have a right to investigate these problems? You should at least get a statement from her explaining why she didn't send that first civil rights violation into Mrs. Dixon, and why she did not work with, finding out why I was being denied medical treatment. I have seen, I also offered Mr. Cook the, an audio tape of what has happened and transpired between me and the Department of Social Services, and the community free clinic, and the other program. But he has not responded to that. The reason why I don't type up all these things is that I have difficulty typing, and I have problems with my eyesight, and I can only spend so much time trying to type. And you're fourth on my list of problems to solve. I'm a community activist, but I keep a low profile, but I try to solve problems. I have a group of doctors who are intentionally harming their patients in Rowan County to make them suffer more. I can prove it.
And I don't mean to interrupt, but I do need you to wrap up, please.
You're fourth on the list. This problem is fourth. You know, I just, I don't have the time to get, I can't take away from what I'm doing to type up all this, but I will come in and give you an audio tape of whatever happened. You can type up your own little statement. And I made this offer over a month ago in an email to Mr. Cook. I'm still willing to do that. I just don't have time to type it up. Please, get a statement from her. Find out why.
Thank you. Shastra Brantley. I apologize if I mispronounced.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Shastra Brantley, and I want to just tell you that I'm thankful for you letting me speak tonight. My husband, two kids, and I moved here from New Jersey for a better quality of life, and to Cabarrus County specifically for the excellent public school systems and diversity. So, this is our home, and we love it here. So, now, five years later, my daughter is in sixth grade at Harris Road Mill, my son's in third grade at Odell, and I'm standing here as a concerned parent about our public school systems, and I see a downward spiral that I'm concerned about. Our educators have not received a raise from the state in six years. The teacher-to-student ratio keeps slowly increasing. Most of the teachers' assistants have been removed from the classroom, and there's more and more testing being added to our children, which is a burden to the children, and a stress to the children, and to our teachers, of course. And in addition to that, as in July, on July 1st, they're going to be taking away the master's-level salary increase. So, I look at all these things, and I'm concerned, and I think of this as a recipe for failure for our public schools. And I just feel like our children have to be our top priority. I started a petition about a month ago with the help of Katie McNay, our Odell... to the children and to our teachers, of course. And in addition to that, as in July—on July 1st, they're going to be taking away the master's level salary increase. So I look at all these things, and I'm concerned, and I think of this as a recipe for failure for our public schools. And I just feel like our children have to be our top priority. I started a petition about a month ago with the help of Katie McNay, our Odell PTA president who's here with me tonight, and we have about 930 signatures. And just in general, there's about 20,000 signatures of other concerned parents of North Carolina with the same kind of—related to these same issues. So I represent not just myself, but thousands and thousands of other concerned parents. And we're just—we just want to make sure that the legislators know how we feel. I'm a family physician, and I'm a product of this public school system. I work at a health center at a large university here, and I have countless of patients as my—you know, students of the university as my patients, who are coming out in the educational system, and they're petrified. They're wondering how they're going to support themselves, pay back their student loans. So it's been a big issue for me, and I have plenty of family members and close friends who are also affected. So I've been watching your retreats and your joint meetings, so I feel like I know you all already, but I know that this is definitely a concern for you all, and I know that you understand this problem. And I want to thank you for seeing the need and acting to put more money in the pockets of our educators at the end of this month. And I know while a 1% increase may not seem nearly enough for what they're worth, it is a start. And I understand that the state is the one that controls their base salary, not the county. And this is the highest raise that Cabarrus County has given anyone in the history, so that's a big plus, and we thank you for that. I do want to say also, though, that I know that the schools are also—the new schools that are going to be built, and that's a part of the budget, so I understand that that's there. And I know that there is—money has to come from somewhere. I'm wondering if more money can't be taken from the North Carolina education lottery system. I know 30% or so gets taken, but if more can be taken, that would be great. I know Governor McCary is going to be—he promises to be giving teachers and principals a $5,000 increase. We just want to make sure he does that, and that is not an empty promise. And in closing, I want to just urge you all as our commissioners to please continue to fight for our educators' salary increase at the state level, to continue to do what you all can do on the county level, to work on decreasing the amount of testing that our poor children and teachers have to do, to get back some of our teachers' assistants into the classrooms, to help our teachers do what they need to do, and to help provide quality education to our children, and to also get our graduate-level teachers the money that they need as well for their hard education. So we want to be able to attract and retain excellent educators that have made our public schools as excellent as they are in Cabarrus County. So thank you.
Thank you. I have one other card. Caroline—
She's for the public hearing.
—and I think you're here for the public hearing.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that's when you want to speak, so—okay. Those are all the cards that I have at this time, Commissioners. Next, we have old business, so I'm going to ask Ben Rose and Trish—everybody that's coming up, give us an update on NCFAST, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chairman Paul. Good evening, everybody. We're here to give you a little bit of an update from last month. As I think we were reporting to you last month, USDA had put the state in a corrective action plan regarding the food and nutrition program. And basically, on the 20—January the 23rd, USDA issued a follow-up letter to the state with some very strict mandates that had to be met with very tight deadlines. At that time, there were about—over—there were over 23,000 applications and recertifications that were not timely across the state. And of those, there were over 8,300 that were over 90 days across the state, which means that they were applications that were—had been pending for 90 days, or they were recertifications that had been pending for 90 days. So the USDA basically told the state that as—by February 10th, the state must have all 90-day applications and recertifications, those that are 90 days and greater, must have all of those processed. In addition to that, we had to have all of our expedited applications processed. Expedites are basically when we get an application and we determine there's an emergency need, and we have to process it within seven days. So that was the first directive that we were put under as a state, and of course, each county was working night and day. The state actually increased the NCFAST availability of the system till 9:30, I believe, during the week. So we had people working second shifts, we had people working Saturdays and Sundays, and this was throughout all the counties. And we had actually had a processing center—the state actually established a processing center within our auditorium at Human Services to serve both us, Rowan—no, Union—
Gaston.
—and Gaston Counties. And that lasted three days because Union and Gaston did not take advantage of it, so they pulled out. So we were back on our own. But at the time they pulled out, they felt like we had a game plan to work with the February 10th deadline. So February 10th came, and the state met the deadline. We were—we met it on that Saturday, we got everything cleared up. We get a list daily of the actual cases that were—we had to process and work on. And I want to say kudos to Trish, to Diane, to Susan Barbie, to all the supervisors and our staff. They have put in so many hours to meet that February 10th deadline and worked so hard. It's just—it's just unbelievable what they've had to do. Now, the next deadline is March 31st. This deadline is very critical because the same threat looms for the state. Basically, if we are not in compliance with all our cases by March 31st as a state, the USDA again can potentially remove federal funding to the state for the food program. And basically, that means we have to have everything timely at that point. We can have nothing behind. So we are now working on that, and we're focused, again, on recertifications, and they have— they'll talk to you a little bit about some of the strategies we're using between now and March 31st to meet that deadline. The other thing—the other topic of discussion that's been coming up over the last week or two is just sustainability. There's a lot of talk with counties about what we're doing to our staff, and can we sustain this pace long-term because the system has been so ineffective for us? The only strategy in a lot of ways that we have is to work our employees literally constantly to just get to where we need to be, and then to maintain that going forward. And it's so hard, and we—and there's—a lot of turnover now going on across the state in this area. So that's been the big topic of discussion, is how can we, as counties, work with the state to try to get the system to be effective for us so we don't have to be at this pace forever because we're just burning our staff out? So that's the topics of discussion going on now. Trish and Diane will talk to you a little bit about strategies we're using to get to the 31st, and hopefully, we can, you know, get back to where we need to be.
Well, we provided you the chart that we've been doing, and so you see that our applications look really good, and that's because we devoted so much time during the—what we call the first crisis. And staff assessed over—almost 500 applications in that two-week period, and we did it because they were working till 9:30 at night and coming in on Saturday and Sunday. Now, the research or recertifications are still at our doorstep, and we've been presenting this to you for months. You know, recertifications have been really our biggest issue, and we're sitting right now at—we're still—we've got some December left, we've got January that we've started. We're already into February, though, so we've got—you know, still—we're, you know, a month and a half, two months out still, but we're working. We've got the same sort of process that we use for the application center. We've pulled staff into a big room. They're dedicated just to recertifications and not getting disturbed by phone calls and that kind of thing. So we're using a core group of staff to focus on the huge volume. With the other staff behind the scenes, they're continuing to do the day-to-day because clients are still coming in, you know, the work still goes on, and we're still battling what's coming with Medicaid. So we're still, you know, very, very concerned about Medicaid, but we are trying to get the March 31st—you know, get us a clean bill of health for March 31st. So that's where we're at right now. And I would like to say, I was unfortunately struck with the croup that was going around, and Diane really did the bulk of the work those two weeks, and I really, really thank her for that. She pulled our division through, so she did a huge, huge volume of work, and we appreciate that.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your update. We appreciate that, and do let everybody know, we appreciate all the work they're putting in in order to try to get this called up and taken care of, so. Commissioners, does anybody have any questions from the data we got?
Well, I just wanted to thank both Diane and Trish, specifically, and Ben for your staff. I mean, nobody's gone through the numbers with you as close as I have, and this is really tremendous progress. You all have done a really great job, and I want to commend both of you for doing that. To look down and see zero from November and four from December is very impressive, and I want to tell you how impressed I am by you. When we were talking about solutions for long-term staff, one of the things we had talked about is a county commission, and Ben, you and I have talked about this personally, but since 2008, I think you had mentioned to me that our food stamp usage has gone up by 50%, and one of the reasons for that you had mentioned to me was they got rid of an asset test. So it used to be that if you had $100,000 in the bank and a Mercedes and a $300,000 house, you could not get food stamps. They expected you to use your assets to fund your nutrition, and they have gotten rid of that. Apparently, under Governor Perdue, they got rid of that test. How can we help you to get that put back into place? Because I do believe that that is an appropriate test, and I think that will cut down on some of these recertifications certainly, and maybe cut down on some of the original applications. So what can we do for you to help you with that?
Well, that is a state waiver, so the state submits a request to the USDA, and so I guess as a board of commissioners, you could petition the state, or as a collective county commission organization, that could be potentially a legislative item. But it really does—I guess the Social Service Board would direct DSS to go forward with the waiver request or not. And Diane worked for the state, so she can maybe speak a little bit more about the behind-the-scenes process.
I'm trying to remember back at the point where they were pursuing the waiver, what some of the rationale was. I'm thinking part of the time it was the economy when the waiver was being pursued. I think the economy was what was driving it at that point. We were having major issues with job loss, and it was just a waiver that they thought economically at the time was a good waiver to pursue. So when it was being looked at, it was just an opportunity to put more households on. We were having issues with poverty. Hunger was an issue, and I think that was generally some of the things that were being looked at when the state pursued the waiver at the time. So I think when it was being looked at, we had some major issues with hunger, poverty across the state. So when it was—when it was chosen and when we did look at it as a state, it was a good waiver to pursue. So I think it's always something you have to look at down the road. Is it something we need? Is it something we maybe need to reverse?
And I believe we've—we made that—you communicated that to the association. I think we worked on—you and I communicated with email about making that perhaps a legislative goal. And part of the argument that was made—I think most states have it, I believe—I think most states are doing it now. And part of the argument that was made, one that was sold, was that it would streamline and make the process easier, but that's out the window at this point with NCFAST and all the issues and challenges that we've had with that. But it's—it definitely—it does remove the asset test for not all applicants, but a lot of applicants.
The large majority.
Large majority.
Large majority households. We were not pursuing resources.
Right.
I do understand that the farm bill has a little—the wording on who can be categorical, which is what these families are. Maybe that has changed, so potentially, that could be, you know, something to look at, that they—the families have to actually receive cash benefits, which at the time, the state has a way around it by saying they potentially could have qualified for cash benefits. And so again, to look at the way the rules are written, and are we following the letter of the law even now with the new farm bill? That would be the other thing.
Well, if we're—if we're servicing 50% more clients, and each one of these clients has to be recertified every six months, that's putting a tremendous burden on your department. And if we can do something to alleviate some of that burden in a way that makes sense and is fair to people, then I'd like to look at that. Mike, is that something that we could look at for our work session in March to look at either passing a resolution, asking the state to look at that, or can we work—yeah?
And let me just say, some of the—the give and take with that is, there's a lot that we have to do with resources when we go back to the old rules. There's a lot of paperwork that's associated with verifying resources. So when we say we have to do recertifications for those households, there's also a lot of paperwork associated with verifying resources. So when you go back to those policies associated with resources, there's also a lot of things that we have to verify with those households when we go back to those other policies, too. So there's—a there's a give and take with that, not having categorical eligibility.
That was part of the streamlining process.
The paperwork may not be diminished, I guess, because you can apply every day for food stamps, which is—you know, some of what we saw in the backlog was there were so many duplicates because families had applied over and over again because they had not gotten a response or because they thought it didn't go through. With the Affordable Care Act, resources are out the window, basically, with the bulk of our Medicaid cases now as well. So, you know, eliminating—adding resources back in may reduce our caseload somewhat, but it could also just increase paperwork. So there could be a—you know, not the economic benefit that we want.
It could add time to the amount of time it takes us to do an application, to do those recertifications. So there is added time, so it may not buy us as much time by not doing those resource—by doing those recertifications, too. So it's just a give and take on both sides.
The thing that I want to make sure is if we're expending the resources, I want to make sure the resources are going to people that actually need it. And it doesn't sound like that's what's happening right now, and we need to fix that.
Well, and I think when they used to talk about categorical eligibility, when we used to talk about vehicles, they used to say, "Well, you need the vehicle to get to work." So that's where some of the categorical eligibility policy came in. Does that vehicle make you ineligible for a program where we want you to be employed to get to work? So it's—it—there was a lot of good with categorical eligibility. It wasn't all bad. So that's where they went with that policy, too.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioners, next, we have the consent agenda. We have eight items there. At this time, I accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Slow move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, new business. Let's see, that's on page 109 in your—oops, sorry, 109. We have had a request to have a public hearing on behalf of ACE Academy for them to fulfill the requirements of Section 107F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 in regards to the issuance of charter school revenue bonds by the Wisconsin Public Finance Authority. So at this time, I would like to open up the public hearing on behalf of ACE Academy, and I'd like to go ahead and call on Caroline Wanamaker-Sink to come up, please, first, and then anyone else that would like to speak for or against will be allowed to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners, for holding this public hearing. As the chairman has indicated, this is a formality required by the federal tax law. Because the ACE Academy charter school will be located in Cabarrus County, we are required by federal law to hold a public hearing in this host location. There is no financial responsibility whatsoever on this county, on the state of North Carolina, or this community at all. The public finance authority is located in Wisconsin, and the borrower—the Conduit Borrower, Vertex Nonprofit Corporation, will be responsible for repaying the tax-exent bonds, but it is very—much more affordable financing for the schools. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to take those. There are also representatives of ACE Academy here as well.
Let's go ahead and open it up for—the or have the public hearing, and then I'll ask Commissioners for questions, okay? So is there anyone here tonight who would like to speak for or against the ACE Academy request to— request to issue, for issuance, in regards to the issuance of charter school revenue Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, we do need a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the bonds and I would also open it up if any commissioners have, need, would like to make a comment at this time. Okay?
Motion for approval, second.
I have a motion to approve the resolution and we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. Okay, commissioners, let me get to the, oops, next page. Next, we have appointments. That starts on page 123. First up is the Active Living and Parks Commission. So I need a motion, please, to remove Scott Brown from the Active Living and Parks Commission roster and thank him for his service, and a motion to appoint Mike Kirby to the Active Living and Parks Commission as the Harrisburg Area Representative to complete an unexpired term ending January 31st, 2015. Do I have a motion?
Slow move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, on page 128, concerning the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. At this time, I accept a motion to remove Patricia Woodard from the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee roster as has been requested due to failure to complete the required orientation and training. Do I have such a motion?
Slow move.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have Cabarrus County Tourism Authority. I need a motion to remove Ken Broome and Jessica Finkensher from the Cabarrus County Tourism Authority roster and thank them for their service, and a motion to appoint Pratesh Nagari to seat number eight, hotelier, to the Cabarrus County Tourism Authority to complete an unexpired term ending June 30th, 2016, including an exception to the residency provision of the appointment policy, and a motion to appoint Tim Hagler to seat number two, tourism activist, to the Cabarrus County Tourism Authority to complete an unexpired term ending June 30th, 2014. Do I have a motion?
Slow move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. One second. Bless you. Okay. Next, page 139. Let's see, we need a motion to remove Jerry Wykel, Frances Koster, Chris Pinto, Jim Fulton, Heath Ritchie, William Robert Higby, Robin Pope, Ronnie Long, Helen McGinnis, Joshua Knip, and Deborah Medlin from the Council for Sustainable Local Economy as requested and to thank them for their service. And also include in the motion to relieve the remaining member, Robert Brown, from his appointment and duties to the CSLE due to lack of membership and funding and to thank him for his service. Do I have such a motion?
Slow move.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next is the Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee. I need, would accept a motion to remove Gail Linker, sorry, from the Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee roster and thank her for her service. Motion to appoint Anita Helms at Large Representative to the Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee to a three-year term ending December 31st, 2016. And a motion to reappoint Linda Miller, Central Area Agency on Aging Ex officio Representative, to the Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee for a three-year term ending December 31st, 2016. Do I have a motion?
Slow move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And the last one we have tonight, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. A motion, and it would accept a motion to remove LaShay Avery from the JCPC roster and thank her for her service, and a motion to appoint Deirdre Webb to the JCPC as the Area Mental Health Director/Designee Representative to complete an unexpired term ending September 30th, 2014, including an exception to the residency provision of the appointment policy. Do I have a motion?
Slow move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. In your packets, commissioners, you have a number of reports for your review. And at this time, I would ask if any commissioners who serve as liaisons to municipalities or various boards and committees has an update for us tonight.
The HCCBG Advisory Board met today and they are working hard to come up with a system of allocating that grant, so I'm pleased to announce that there's work being made there. And also, just while I'm here, I want to do thank Bobby Smith in particular and the emergency services of all of our county for the tremendous job that they did this week. That was quite a storm that hit Cabarrus County and I think at one time on Thursday night, I got an email that said only 1,200 people were without power and to think about the job that they must have done to keep 180,000 people in power during that storm. That's a pretty tremendous job and I just wanted to say thank you to our emergency services.
Any other commissioners have comments? Yes, sir?
Just a couple, couple of meetings that I've attended recently. The Transportation Advisory Board met last week. Couple, couple facts that we discussed was since July the 1st, they have completed 48,291 trips, which is a lot of, a lot of trips on the road. One of the issues that we discussed was they have had a fairly high number of no-shows and cancellations, which is a problem that they struggle with. And of course, they're dealing, a large percentage of these trips are elderly and handicapped and it's quite a chore for our senior citizens to keep up with their medical appointments and those sort of things. So they are instituting some policies and systems to try to reduce that number and I think they will have success in that regard. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council will be having their annual legislative breakfast this coming Friday at 8:00 a.m. in the multipurpose room here in this building. I feel sure that all of you have received invitations. If you have an opportunity to attend, that is always great to have some of those service recipients come in, some of the young people, to talk about how that program has impacted their lives and got them back on the right track. So I would encourage you to do that if you can. The Cabarrus Partnership for Children is actually had to do some rescheduling because of the weather like last week, which happens with most everything. But serving on the program committee there, we're currently in the process of going through each and every program and determining whether that's appropriate to continue with and looking at things that we might need to add. We spent a couple hours doing that last week and we'll meet a couple hours again this week, so that process is going along well. It is always enlightening to me to really understand the scope of programs that our county participates in. So I'll pick three more for next month. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Also, as a reminder, there are a lot of opportunities for citizens of Cabarrus County to get involved. I'd like to mention a few committees that we have openings on. The Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee has positions. Agricultural Advisory Board, we need someone for Cardinal Innovations. Healthcare Solutions Community Oversight Board. We have an ETJ Extraterritorial Jurisdiction position on Concord Planning and Zoning Commission. Food Policy Council has some vacancies. Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority. Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee has a number of positions. So we'd like to encourage our citizens to get involved and to go to the county's website and fill out an application so that we can appoint you and get you more active in the community, so. And thank you very much to all those that currently serve. The next item we have, commissioners, is just general comments by board members. If anybody has any general comments that they would like to make tonight. Okay. We do have need for a closed session, so at this time, I would request a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318-11A3 to discuss pending litigation. Is there anybody we need to invite in other than our attorney and Ms. Dubois? May I have a motion to go into closed session?
Slow move.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much for being here tonight. We will adjourn now into closed session. Good night, everybody.